Welcome to the July thirteenth Select Board Meeting. Please note that in accordance with the emergency orders announced by Governor Charlie Baker to protect public health during the COVID-19 outbreak, this Select Board Meeting will not be open to the public for physical attendance, and the Select Board members are meeting online via Zoom Web Conference. The meeting is being livestreamed and cable broadcast by the Easton Community Access Television, Comcast ninety-eight, Verizon twenty-three, and on ECAT's website at www.eastoncat.org. If you're watching this at home and you have a question or a comment, you can email Michael Blanchard, mblanchard@easton.ma.us, or you can pose your question on the Q and A feature of the Zoom portal. Please remember to include your name and street address for our minutes. At this time, I would like to ask each select person to say their name and ensure that we have a quorum.
Craig Barger.
Tom Brusart.
Chuck King.
Mark Lamb.
And I'm Dottie Fulgenetti. Thank you very much, everyone, for joining us, and the first thing that we have tonight on the agenda is announcement of Easton being designated as a Housing Choice Community by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts for our second time around. So we're going to bring on a couple of other speakers, and Connor, if you'd like to introduce that.
Sure, so I'm happy to report that, once again, Easton has been named a Housing Choice Community in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. We were one of the first communities back in two thousand and eighteen to be inducted into this program. It's a voluntary program where you apply to be recognized for your efforts in promoting housing production and affordable housing production and other, you know, equitable policies that help make your community more inclusive. I thought the timing on this award was quite nice. Obviously, we've had some conversations around social policy and inclusivity in Easton, and I think it's important and always a good opportunity to kind of highlight what some of our longer term, and in this case, we're talking the work of the past decade, efforts are to make the community more inclusive, and so specifically in Easton.
That makes.
In Easton, since two thousand and eleven, we have more than doubled our affordable housing inventory. At that time, we had three hundred and eighty-three units on the subsidized housing inventory. That's a roster of homes that meet certain affordability requirements under state law. Out of the eighty-one hundred homes we have in the community, that was around the time when Shovel Works got going, and since then, we've added more than four hundred units to that inventory through Shovel Works, Avalon, the expansion of Avalon, efforts from the Affordable Housing Trust, and we've expanded our subsidized housing inventory to eight hundred thirty-four units, which now puts us, as the board is aware, with the approval of Avalon Two at over the ten percent threshold of affordable housing in the community under state law and into roughly a roster of only about fifteen percent of communities by last check in two thousand and seventeen in the state that have done so. So Easton's one of only seventy-four communities in the Commonwealth who are Housing Choice Community. That's about twenty percent of the cities and towns of the state, and we have collectively produced more than seventy percent of the housing in the Commonwealth in the past five years. So I think that it's great. It's a lot of work by a lot of different boards and committees and residents, developers. It's moving the town in the right direction, and I also thought this would be a nice way to kind of segue into and reintroduce Stephanie Danielson, who has come back to Easton as our Planning Director, to kind of give an update and a summary of the work that we're doing on housing with Wayne Beitler, our community planner, who's been supporting the Affordable Housing Trust Board on their efforts on the same. So Stephanie, welcome back, and I think we have you muted still.
There we go. You can hear me now?
We can hear you.
Yeah.
Welcome back.
Hi, Stephanie.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I'm happy to be here. Before I ask Wayne to talk about the Rental Assistance Program as a result of or in response to COVID-19, I'm just going to kind of steal his thunder a little bit and talk about some of the significant accomplishments that the Affordable Housing Trust, which Wayne staffs, has been able to achieve over the last eighteen months where these projects have actually come to fruition. It's a few years of effort getting there. The first is just about, I think it was about a year ago, Wayne, the Affordable Housing Trust, after purchasing and doing some repairs on a house on Eisenhower Drive, was able to sell that to an eligible family, and they have moved in and are now residents of Easton, and that's a permanently affordable unit, counts towards the SHI. Last November, I mean, I'm sorry, the end of October. Oh, my goodness, I'm having a senior moment. Electric Avenue, it is Habitat for Humanity broke ground on a unit, on a property on Electric Avenue that was owned by the town, and after issuing an RFP and awarding the purchase of the property to Habitat for Humanity, again, they are building a home for a family who will be living in Easton, and it happens to be an individual who actually is employed by the town. So that was a nice little added benefit there. The Affordable Housing Trust is in the process of purchasing or has recently purchased, Wayne, the property on Paquannicat Avenue formerly owned.
Correct, yes. The Affordable Housing Trust purchased a parcel, excuse me, on Paquannicat Avenue, and a few months later also purchased a parcel down on Morse Road, and we're in the process of putting together an RFP and issuing that for a nonprofit developer to build affordable family housing similar to the Habitat project on Electric Avenue. So we're pretty excited to get that up and running soon.
And then another project that's been long in the making is Three Hundred Foundry Street, the group home for individuals with acquired brain injury, and that's moving through permitting, and that that project, again, has taken a lot of time to get where it is, but that is going to be a significant achievement for Easton in the type of housing that it's going to provide.
Yeah, so it's pretty exciting, all the projects that we've managed to really advance, as Dottie knows and several other folks know who've been involved with the trust over the years. There is so much that happens at the foundation level to just get projects up and running, and it's incredibly gratifying when they finally see the light of day and you start actually having buildings. You can talk about families moving in. So it's really encouraging to see a lot of the progress that's really visible in the last several months.
So Wayne, you want to tell everybody about the Rental Assistance Program?
Sure. So mindful that so many households have lost significant income due to COVID-19, the Affordable Housing Trust had an emergency meeting several months ago and found eighty thousand dollars already in hand with which to fund an emergency rental assistance grant program. We've been working out program details with Town Council. We've we're securing a contract with a qualified nonprofit called Metro West Collaborative, and we anticipate in the next week to two weeks going public with grant applications that would be to the nonprofit group Metro West Collaborative on the town's behalf. They're handling applications, qualifying applicants, holding a lottery. So briefly, this is grant assistance. It's temporary for three months. Given the amount of money on hand, we anticipate helping about twenty-five households. As I said, applications will be available soon on the town website, and we'll publicize them elsewhere, including flyers at the food pantry, and we intend to do a press release to the Eastern Journal. And households below eighty percent of the area median income with very recent income loss who aren't receiving other government assistance like Section Eight or living in, you know, Easton Housing Authority units can apply for monthly grants directly to their landlord. So there would be a signed agreement between the the consultant Metro West, between the tenants, and between their landlord for three months of payments to help with their rent. Payments will, grant amounts will be roughly eight hundred thousand for a one-bedroom, nine hundred thousand for a two-bedroom, and one thousand for a three-bedroom.
Wayne?
Yes, ma'am.
You said eight hundred thousand?
Eight hundred. I apologize.
Yeah.
Eight hundred for one bedroom, nine hundred.
Yeah.
One thousand. And like I said, we hope to have that more widely public with applications available within the next week or so. And then we will evaluate the interest and how the program is running and likely extend and expand the program with additional funding that was approved at June Town Meeting.
What was the, what was the total amount of funding, Wayne? I know it was eighty thousand dollars on the front end. What was the second amount, if you could remind me?
Um, it's eighty thousand, eighty thousand dollars on hand from the Affordable Housing Trust, and then at the June twenty-second Annual Town Meeting, the people of Easton very generously approved an additional two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for rental assistance.
Got it. So eighty thousand is, I think you said loosely, twenty-five families?
Yeah, it all depends on how the application is, with the dollar amount, so roughly twenty-five households, correct?
Got it. So loosely, another ninety families, all things being equal, that we might be able to help out.
Yeah.
And we should be eligible for reimbursement for some of that, if not all of that, funding through the CARES Act, correct?
I do not believe that is true. I think that's only for other government programs like Raft. I do don't think that applies to us. No, I've looked into it, but I'm pretty sure we don't. I can double check, but I don't think we do.
Okay. Craig?
I just am very impressed, Wayne, that, you know, having, having had the opportunity to sit in the Affordable Housing Trust a number of times, and then talking to you, and welcome back, Stephanie.
Thank you.
I'm just very impressed with the work that the Affordable Housing Trust has done. Where do we stand with the Electric Ave building at this point? How far along are they with the construction?
Um, the honest answer is I don't actually know. I haven't talked to them very recently. I believe, like everything, a lot of construction projects have stalled a bit. So I need to reach out to my contact over there and see how they're, how they're doing. And if anybody has driven past to take a look and see if there's anything happening on the site.
I have ridden past several times over the last few months, and there was activity. It looked like some of the construction vehicles were being moved onto-site, construction trailers, so it looked like they were starting, beginning to start work.
Great. One of the challenges with Habitat is, so of course, construction firms kind of keep working on housing as a priority in Massachusetts, but a challenge with the Habitat model is a lot of the labor is volunteer, including from the households who will be living there. So it's really hard to do this sort of volunteer build with the distancing and masking requirements for the current pandemic. So I think that's probably slowed them up a bit.
Thank you, Wayne.
Sure.
Chuck? Chuck, do you have any comments? And you're on the Affordable Housing Trust, so thank you for your work on this.
Thank you. No, I'm impressed with the work that our leader Wayne has done on these things, and also the Chair, Nikki Dostumian, and the rest of our board.
Terrific.
That's it. Wayne, Nikki, you guys have done an outstanding job. Past couple of years, I've seen a lot of the things you've done. You seem to be getting better at it. Not that you were not good before, but like, you really hit your stride, for sure.
Yeah, thank you. And, you know, like I said, a lot of it is there's so much work that has to be done that no one ever really sees in order to get a project to the point where you can actually show something for it. But yeah, it is gratifying, and it's, um, really encouraging the amount of public support from the people of Easton that the Affordable Housing Trust has. That really speaks to the generosity and spirit of the town, and I'm really happy that we can be part of that.
We're lucky to have you.
And I'd just wrap it up to say that, you know, becoming a Housing Choice Community is a really big undertaking, and it's a very big honor for us to be a part of that. Part of what that also does is it gives us higher ranking for other grants that we receive. So we received a two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar grant to work in the Five Corners for the first time that we got, we got this. But even when you apply for a MassWorks grant, that's one of the questions is, are you a Housing Choice Community? So when you can demonstrate that you've been doing this kind of work in your community, it does elevate you in the competitive grant situation, and we do a really good job in Easton, especially without a dedicated grant writer for us to be able to be awarded these grants. I'd also like to say that, you know, I think that this board has done a really good job to educate themselves around housing and around how that drives infrastructure change and how that helps with economic development. And all of the groups that are involved in being educated about these, you know, the Planning Board, Conservation Commission, the Affordable Housing Trust, the Historical Commission, it takes all of those people together to work to be able to bring this information to the public, and really, we're changing the culture of the way that people look at housing in our community. So I I really do want to thank the people at Town Meeting that vote for opportunities to look to change zoning so that we can have a more diverse housing stock, and some of those things have been super important to driving economic development. So there's a lot of congratulations to go around on this, but thank you very much, Wayne and Stephanie, for getting this over the finish line. All right, we'll go on to our next item is annual board and committee volunteer appointments. So let me just, the first one is the contested. So the first seat that we have for the Affordable Housing Trust, we had two people, one of them withdrew his application this afternoon, and I believe we have Ernesto Stiven. So if we could bring him into the conversation, and then we can do an interview with Ernesto. Hello, Ernesto. You've been magically transformed into the, into the block here. If you want.
Hello?
About why you're interested.
There we go. Here I am.
There you are.
Sorry, Dottie. Welcome, welcome. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.
I'm sorry, I think I froze up a little bit. My internet connection is a little bit unstable. We just want you to introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about why you'd like to be on the Affordable Housing Trust.
Okay, my name is Ernesto Stiven. I live in Fifteen Gary Lane in Northeaston, Massachusetts, and I work for Mass DOT. I'm an electrical engineer, and, but I usually work as a civil engineer. I work in that, in the reconstruction of the BU Bridge. Yeah, ten years ago. Yeah, and, and I worked in several, you know, development in Massachusetts such as the intersection, you know, improvement, like schooling and lighting, you know, I'm an electrical engineer. I do lighting and emergencies and stuff. And I also work at the, I don't know, at the terminals to improve their safety, make sure that there's no light in, no water in there and stuff. So, so I've been here for, in Massachusetts for over ten, yeah, about over ten years, but prior to that, I was in New York for like thirty years and working in, as a, as a constructor, engineer. Well, I, I've heard about you, about the, about your board, and then I said, let me check. Let me check what's going on there. And I put you on your group tonight, and I see, and I've heard, from what I've heard tonight, you know, it's like I'm very happy that you guys have held out in your hands, and you're doing a lot of nice work. And I would be very happy to join you.
Thank you. Well, we're always looking for new faces and fresh perspective, and I think that if you, if you support affordable housing, and you'd like to see that inclusivity in our community, you're going to really love our trust. It's a great group of people. Chuck, do you have any specific questions that you want? Chuck King, our Select Board Member, is on the Affordable Housing Trust as the select person's representative.
Okay.
No, I, Ernesto, how are you?
I'm fine, and you?
Good. Assuming we vote for you, then I look forward to seeing you at our next meeting.
That would be nice. I'll be there as long as I'm invited.
I'm inviting you.
Thank you, thank you.
Chuck, you want, do you want to just mention when you meet and how often you meet, just a little bit about that?
Well, we, we've been meeting, I think, at about once a month. It's we, we sort of plan on, excuse me, one second, I just have to shut something off here. We, it, it's kind of determined as a group, but we've been generally meeting oh, once a month, I'd say, I think it's roughly six o'clock in the evening. So not too, not too tough to handle, generally.
Yeah, yeah.
And it's good to see a person with your kind of experience that that will come in handy in some of the aspects of of looking at these housing situations.
Absolutely. I'd be, I'd be happy. I'd be glad to, to help. Whatever I can do.
Sounds great.
Very good.
Craig, any questions? Craig, any questions?
No, not at this point. I'm just excited that Ernesto decided he wanted to help us out with the Affordable Housing Trust.
Absolutely.
Agreed. I agree completely with what Craig and Chuck have said. Ernesto, I think you have an incredible background that could add an awful lot to the team, and it's a great team that you're joining. So I think you'll have a lot of great work ahead of you.
I can see that, and I'm, and I'm excited. I'm excited to join you.
And Mark?
I have no questions. I think you're gonna get it, so welcome.
Thank you.
And, yeah, it'll be an exciting board to be part of. There's a lot happening on that board. It's definitely evolved a lot over the years, and I think at this point in time, they're arguably at the best they've ever been.
Thank you. I'm here.
Okay, I would entertain a motion and a second to appoint Mr. Stiven to the Affordable Housing Trust.
Second.
So that's Chuck and Craig, and a roll call vote, please.
Barger, Stiven.
Brusart, Stiven.
King, Stevens.
Lamb, Stiven.
And Fulgenetti, Stiven. So you will get an email from the Town Clerk's Office, and they will talk to you about how to get sworn in, and you'll get more information about moving forward. So welcome to the Affordable Housing Trust. We're very happy to have you, and.
Welcome, my boy.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you for applying. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Thanks. I love you, and I'd be very happy to help as much as I can.
Thank you.
Great.
All right, the next, the next up is for the Community Preservation Commission. We have one, we had three people listed. One of them has withdrawn. So there are two names. We have Nicole De Senzo and Matthew Falconstein. I don't believe that Matthew is able to make it tonight, but we do have Nicole here. If somebody would like to bring Nicole into the, into the screen here. Hello. How are you?
Hello.
How are you guys?
Hi, Nicole.
Great.
Great.
Welcome. We, this is a little strange to do interviews by Zoom. We haven't done this before, so if you would just like to introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about why you'd like to be on the Community Preservation Commission.
Sure, I'm Nicole De Chenzo. Oh, no, it's saying my internet connection is unstable, so let me know if I cut out or anything.
Sure.
I'm a recent college graduate. I'm about to enter a position in behavioral health, and I've lived in Easton since I was like five years old. Really trying town issues and events and town politics. And I think that the Community Preservation Committee is a really unique, reading about, it's like foundation in Massachusetts and how many different like towns and cities have adopted it. And I think that it's a really interesting avenue, especially for Easton because of how much like conservation land and histories we have. There's a lot of rich history here, so I think that it's very important and a unique institution for our town to have. I obviously don't have a lot of experience in town politics, but I consider myself to be a very engaged and quick learner. I enjoy work. Think that I would be a strong candidate for this position. I would love to get more involved with the town community as well, with other people on the board. But either way, because I know that, like, the meetings are open for public hearing most of the time, too, so.
Sure. Great. So you're gonna, one of the things that I just wanted to mention is that we're doing Zoom meetings now because we're in a state of emergency still. We're hoping that things will get better, being optimistic, and if that happens, we would have in-person meetings, too, at some point. So you're, I just want to make sure your availability. I think the CPC meets, you know, not super frequently, but probably once a month, more so as we get towards town meeting, and that you'd be able to meet with them. They meet in the evening generally.
Yeah, I don't think I would have a problem meeting. I'm not leaving Easton anytime soon.
Okay, great. Craig, do you have any questions?
No, at this point, I don't have any. Thank you, Nicole, for applying. We appreciate that.
Tom, any questions?
You're on mute, Tom.
Thank you so much, Craig. I appreciate that. I don't have any specific questions, Dottie. I think you asked the one that I was really focused on in terms of availability. Nicole, I do notice that you didn't list any second choice of other boards or committees, but I'm just wondering, do you have any other interest in any other boards or committees as well, in terms of how you might be able to engage in the town?
Yeah, I don't know why I didn't list any other choices. I applied. I just wasn't like, I don't know, my brain just like skipped over that part. But yeah, I would definitely be interested in participating in a different board. Definitely, we're just talking about, I don't know if there's like an open position for that. I didn't get to look deeply at which boards have open positions other than the CPC.
I think we can get you a listing as well, even, even let alone where this falls tonight in terms of this opportunity. But I know that you're engaged from meeting you at Town Meeting, and if there are other boards or committees as well, that might be a fit. It's always great to have energetic people that can join and help the community understand the issues before it and help us make progress. So I can certainly circle back with other openings that still exist on other boards and committees.
I think those are mostly going to be filled tonight with people that have submitted. Am I right with that, Michael or Connor?
Yes.
Hi, Dottie. After this evening's appointments, I believe the openings will a slot on the Canoe River Aquifer Advisory Committee, a slot on the Cultural Council, two slots on the Public Spaces Committee, and we have one pending slot that we believe is about to be vacant on the Council of Major.
Okay. So we, we will publicize those. You can serve on more than one board or committee, but we like to try to see a bunch of new faces, too, so. And, you know, people should know, if you're watching from home, to keep, you know, keep an eye on the committee appointments, because sometimes people are, they do need to step off a committee during the term, so they do pop up frequently. Who did I miss? Chuck, any questions?
No, I had the same question about availability. No, I had the same question about availability, and that's been answered. I appreciate Nicole's willingness to help.
No questions.
All right. Thank you so much, Nicole. The other person that was going to to submit his information is Matthew Falconstein, and he did send us a resume with his information. And I don't really have any questions from that. I think that, you know, Mr. Falconstein had applied for a couple of things, so maybe I would like to definitely have Nicole join the board. I like what she had to say. I think that she has demonstrated that she's been very interested in our work. And we did get to speak after town meeting for a little bit. So if anybody would like to make a motion and a second, then that it will be a roll call vote.
I'm moved.
Second.
So that's Craig and Tom, and the roll call, Craig?
Barger De Senzo.
Rusar De Chenza.
King De Senzo.
Lamb Falconstein.
And Full Janetti De Chenza. So you will get an email from our town clerk, and she will explain how to get sworn in, and then you'll get notification of a meeting. So.
All right, thank you guys so much.
We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard.
Thanks, Nicole.
Thank you.
All right, and next is, sorry, I'm using my computer screen to go back and forth tonight. The list of uncontested seats. So we have for the Commission on Disability, we have Karen Katz for a one-year appointment. Three years, sorry. One seat, one seat appointment is open in a three-year term. So if somebody would like to make a motion.
Want to do a slate?
Yeah, Dottie, there's actually a slate available in your packet, but I believe Mike, who can confirm, forwarded to you with the updates tonight reflective of the withdrawals we had. So we have Karen Katz for a three-year term, June 30 of 2023, for the Commission on Disability. Michaela Wolf, the incumbent alternate on the Historical Commission, for a three-year term, June 30 of 2023. Jennifer Tuney Campanella on the Human Resources Board for reappointment as an incumbent for three years, June 30 of 2023. And Rob or Bob Benton, the incumbent of the Recreation Commission for three years through June 30, 2023. Mike, is that the accurate slate?
Yes, that's correct, and that is unchanged. The withdrawals only affected the contested.
Thank you. And so that is in your packet. Those are the folks who have replied for appointment or reappointment. These are all uncontested. And we would recommend a vote to appoint the slate as presented.
Okay, Craig?
I'm moved. Second.
So that's Craig and Chuck. Tom, you're still on mute. Roll call vote, Craig?
Barger Slate.
Rusard Slate.
King Slate.
Lamb Slate.
And Full Janetti Slate. All right, thank you. Next up is Select Board Reorganization. Every year after the election, congratulations, Craig, on being reelected. The board looks at voting for a chair and a vice chair.
I would like to take the opportunity to nominate Dottie Full Janetti for the position of Chair of the Eastern Select Board.
Second.
All right, I appreciate your your vote of confidence, then. That's a roll call vote. So Craig, Craig made the motion and Tom seconded.
Barger Full Janetti.
Rusar Full Janetti.
King Full Janetti.
Lamb Full Janetti.
And Full Janetti, Full Janetti. And if somebody would like to make a motion for a vice chair.
I'd like to make a motion to reappoint Craig Barger. Again, congratulations on your win, Craig. Well-earned.
Thank you.
As vice chair.
Second.
So that's Tom and Chuck. A roll call vote, starting with you, Craig.
Barger, Barger.
Rusar Barger.
King Barger.
Lamb Barger.
And Full Janetti Barger. All right, great. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you all.
The next, the next is a standing update for COVID response. Connor?
Sure, thank you, Dottie. Just one moment, let me grab my presentation here. So standing update, just where we are in Easton with our ongoing COVID response. So the Easton Emergency Management Association has been activated since early March. The team continues to meet and check in multiple times per week, not seven days a week anymore, thankfully, typically. It includes leadership from public safety, public health, schools, our office, Public Works. And we interface with a variety of different working teams, crossing over a whole number of different kind of subject areas under our control, whether it's board and committee business, finance and operations, inspectional services of a community, and a whole host of other matters. So as is typical, I'm just going to kind of go from big picture to more minute here. We changed up the formatting a little bit to kind of use some better data visualization on coronavirus in the United States, pulling from some good data sources. So before getting into kind of covering some important trends in the United States, I think it's it is worth noting. You know, there's a lot of generally positive news and trends coming out of Massachusetts and the Northeast region of the United States. And that is definitely good news, and after many, many months, we're happy to see that. But it's important that we also keep our eye on ball and keep an eye on what's going on regionally and nationally because it could have important implications for what we're all doing come fall. So in the United States, as of our last check, we typically use the Johns Hopkins University databank for our figures. United States is, to no one's surprise, unfortunately continuing to be the epicenter of the pandemic, with over 3.3 million cases, over 130,000 people have lost their lives. And as you can see from this chart on the left, the rate of new cases is actually increasing in the United States. A lot of that, again, is outside of our region of the country. But there are some pretty significant increases in daily cases being confirmed in the United States and picking up speed. So what this chart shows is the rolling seven-day average of new cases in the United States, and it's also color-coded so that it also incorporates in the positivity rate of those tests. The reason why I think this is worth noting is you hear folks talk about the first wave and the second wave, and really, we had a first wave and a plateau, and now it's just skyrocketing. So, you know, thankfully, again, this is not, this is not similar to the trends we're seeing in Massachusetts a few slides later. We'll see basically the total opposite of this, thankfully, but this is important that we keep our eyes on this. So the daily confirmed COVID cases in the United States during what was really the worst of it here in April, had a seven-day average of about 30,000 cases per day being confirmed. That was largely in the Northeast, as well as California and a couple other really hard-hit states in the earlier months of the pandemic in the United States. That began to drop slowly to about 20,000 cases at the same time. So the cases were going down as well as the positivity rates because the amount of testing was going up, which was good. That was a good trend to see in the United States. It's one that was happening here. And so that was around Memorial Day to mid-June. You see the kind of a minor dip into that plateau into about the 20,000 area for about a month. However, since mid-June, that's really, really rapidly reversed and taken off. And so, you know, we're now passing a rolling seven-day average of cases in this country. That's almost twice as high as where we were in the spring of over 60,000 per day. This graph is important because it highlights the share of those daily tests that are coming back positive. There is when you look at the previous couple of slides, some folks have the inclination to say, oh, well, that's nothing to worry about. It's because we're doing more tests. And that's it. And so increased daily caseloads can in part be attributed to more testing, which is good. Increasing testing capability is a is a core part of dealing with contagious illness. But it's not just increased tests. So it's not accurate to say that our cases in the United States are doubling the seven-day daily confirmation rate because we're just doing so many more tests. At the same time, as our testing capabilities around the country are increasing, the percentage of positive, the percentage of those tests that are coming back positive are increasing in a lot of areas, too, and you'll see that again, that kind of same Memorial Day to mid-June lull where the percent of tests coming back positive dropped below 5% in the United States, and it's now starting to pick back up. Earlier, you see that really pronounced over 20% in spring. That was a function of how hard-hit the Northeast again was and how limited our testing capabilities were back then. But it's notable that there are states nearing and some like Arizona that are well in excess of 20% positivity rates right now. So this is, right now, the United States is trending towards not only more tests, more cases, but on the whole, more of those tests coming back positive, which is concerning. You know, for example, Florida has seen their average daily case rate grow from about 1,500 cases a day a month ago to more than 10,000 a day on average. They had a one-day confirm more than 15,000 cases of COVID this weekend. At the same time, as we've said, you can't attribute this solely to new testing. They're in the past two weeks have increased their daily testing from about 40 to 53,000, but their positive rate is continuing to climb as well, from about 15 and change to 18 and change. None of this is stated here to be doom and gloom or negative, but to highlight the reality that, you know, the coronavirus is still a very real public health crisis in this country. And thankfully, this graph does a good job showing it. You know, people have the tendency to politicize data. They say, well, it's more testing, it's this, it's that. You can you can add, you can look at it from a percentage basis or a per capita basis, too, to kind of cut through some of that. And what this graph shows, which pulls from publicly available CDC data, is the current rate of positivity coming back on tests throughout the United States and the Northeast region, which pretty closely mirrors the governor's new travel restrictions. Thankfully, he's doing quite well. We're hovering around 2% of our tests coming back positive, which is great compared to where we were. Unfortunately, this is not shared with all of our sister states in the United States, where there are many that are seeing more than 10%, more than 20% of their tests come positive. Pulling that down to Massachusetts. So this chart is a cumulative graph. It shows that kind of effect of flattening or bending the curve, people like to say. You know, we've had, we've had over 111,000 cases in Massachusetts confirmed since this began. Over 8,000 residents in the state have died from this illness. This graph is, I think, a better representation of the progress that's been made. This shows the new daily cases in the Commonwealth. And I said before, a few slides ago, this is basically the inversion of what we're seeing on a national scale where the rolling seven-day average of new cases in Massachusetts has thankfully been hot precipitously by more than 90%. You know, we were averaging more than 2,000 cases a day in the state in mid-April, and now it's between 100 and 200 new cases per day. So that positivity rate's about 2%. It's well below the national average of 9%, and it's significantly below some of the hotspots in the United States that are pushing over 20. As the board is aware, as everyone in Massachusetts hopefully is aware, you know, the Commonwealth under Governor Baker's direction was one of the last states in the United States to reopen. And when it did so, it did so slowly and with a gradual phased plan, which we only reached phase three of that plan last week, which has been indisputably very challenging for certain sectors of the economy, for for all of us in our daily lives. But it seems to be, you know, kind of proof of concept at this point, that this state's efforts, you know, more serious policies about mask application, slower and more cautious reopening of businesses. And what we're seeing now with our daily cases moving in the right direction seems to be in quite stark contrast to the relatively explosive growth in states that reopened much more quickly than we did. So hopefully, this will be a continuing trend where things are continuing to move in a positive direction in our state. In Easton, this is the cumulative graph. I don't have the daily tests or the daily confirmation because our sample size is so small, but we have largely flatlined, thankfully. Our caseload has only grown marginal since May, and it has mirrored statewide trends as far as what we had most of our growth in April and May. Those were incredibly busy and challenging months. We're still taking this very seriously and being very vigilant about it with our interdepartmental working teams, but we have not seen, you know, double-digit case growth during one day. So we're at about 275 cases total throughout this. And unfortunately, we've had 35 folks in Easton lose their lives to this illness. So as I just touched on last week, phase three of the governor's reopening plans began that allowed, this graphic's actually slightly outdated. It still says bars. Bars have been moved into phase four because that's one of the things that we've learned as states began reopening is that indoor bars appear to be pretty serious places for spread. So that that's this graphic from the state is now slightly out of date. Bars have been moved off. But what's happened is some more outdoor activities and business types have been reopened. Easton is continuing to work with our business community and help them with those standards. We've been issuing temporary outdoor dining permits through this office to our restaurant community to help them try to maximize the amount of safe seating that they can have for folks. Board of Health and Health and Community Services has been in contact with camps and other recreational businesses to support them, not just in phase two, but in now some of the changed phase three standards. And on the municipal service front, we're continuing to provide administrative services remotely. We're beginning to work to do our assessment of what will be, in my estimation, a very gradual and cautious reopening of any kind of in-person services. And that would take the form of a point only at first for those who cannot be served remotely. That works ongoing. I don't have a particular line in the sand on when that will be yet, but it's, we're trying to, you know, take this cautiously as we have with all of our efforts in the past few months. In June, we were relatively busy in some other areas. We were able to conduct three electoral exercises, two elections and a town meeting safely. So that was a really good thing to see for the community and for all the departments that worked on that. As far as where we are, Parks and Rec, all of our parks and fields are open for use. Folks still need to observe that six-foot social distancing standard. And if they can't keep their distance from folks who are not in their household, they should still put a mask on. There's much more specific guidance on that from the Commonwealth. I encourage people to go to mass.gov/covid19 to get that detail. Town playgrounds are open. Again, same thing. Folks can use those facilities, and they should, you know, with the people who are not in their family, if they're not bringing their kids to the park, there's other kids running around with them, they, you know, they should put a mask on if they're within six feet of of folks not from their household. Recreation did postpone and cancel some of their early summer programs, and the pool is not open this season. We're still working on what we can do later this summer. On Public Works, Safety and Inspection Services, Public Safety and Works have been fully operational this whole time. We do still have public access limited to the Little Thirpe Street Police Department for emergencies. Back in June, we loosened and expanded our inspection policy. So now, as long as we can conduct those inspections safely with the appropriate distancing, all of them can be performed. Folks can contact those departments to schedule that as needed. And right now, what we're working on is just kind of keeping our eye on the national, regional, and national trends and and trying to be prepared in the event that there is some sort of second wave in this region. I put that in quotes down there because I, again, I I think it's kind of a misnomer to talk about a second wave in the United States because it really, it has never calmed down that much in this country. It's just moved around. So we're working on the emergency management team and getting purchase orders rolling so that we can build our own municipal cash of personal protective equipment and other key critical supplies so that if this does come back and it looks like spring again at some point, that we have the equipment on hand and are not in this kind of Hunger Games-style marketplace where everyone is competing furiously for a limited supply. So we will be stocking up To try to be more prepared, God forbid that we need that stuff again. So that's what I had prepared on that front, I'm happy to answer any questions from the board. On this topic. Or move on if you've spent enough of your time talking about it as well.
Thanks Connor, any questions from you Craig?
Oh, I have none.
Tom?
Connor, any update on what the potential macroeconomic and both, I guess, state finances? As a result of the recent developments that we've seen?
As it pertains to our budget, no. You know, you there's, you'll see articles on State House News here and there of, you know, ex-official hopeful of potential federal bill. But nothing concrete, the state, my understanding is the state's legislative session ends in twenty. Not even eighteen days, so I think the likelihood of a budget being drafted and put forward before that is next to zero. So I think we're going to be heading into the fall without a state budget adopted, I would love to be wrong and eat crow on that two weeks from now, but I don't think that's going to be the case. So we don't know what that looks like for us, there's been some things have moved positively, obviously, national unemployment. And again, this shows the references we're using, right, national employment somewhere in the elevens, which is by all normal measures disastrously bad. But again, is better than where we were last month. However, that survey by Bureau of Labor Statistics was done during mid-June before states began reclosing a lot of their activities, right? California has begun closing certain business types, New Jersey has done so, other states are backsliding in that regard. So it'll be interesting to see what happens on that macro level, Tom, nationally. And I believe that a lot of the forecasts from Congressional Budget Office are still kind of looking at double digit unemployment, so I haven't seen. Anything that leads me to believe that there's a dramatic shift in our expectations for revenue. You know, the US House of Representatives did pass, I believe, the Heroes Act, a three trillion dollar stimulus package back in May. That would have one trillion for state and local governments and schools, which would be really helpful because meeting. The demands of providing services, let alone educational services during a pandemic without a vaccine. Frankly, are not things that are within our financial capabilities, even with the CARES funding. Is absolutely necessary and it will be a complete shame if Congress and the president cannot figure that out. That is, there are surveys of a macroeconomic perspective, kind of surveys of experts where. Five thirty-eight polled a lot of macroeconomic experts recently and they listed their number one fears and concerns. For the macroeconomic condition of the United States, but first being continued spikes of COVID with reshuttering of local economies because of uncontrolled spread. Followed only by the absence of a financial relief package for cities, towns and schools. That they they view, I think correctly, and I, we all lived through two thousand eight, nine and ten. We know, we know how this goes, if there is not more relief provided to municipal governments and schools, there will be a major drag. On employment and on the economy for years and years to come, not to mention the depressed service delivery capabilities, which is the complete opposite of what we should be doing. So not in a soapbox.
No, not at all, I appreciate it.
So. Hopefully, there is some talk, I believe Treasury Secretary Mnuchin acknowledged, you know, it may cost money to do some of these things. And supposedly, there's, there's talk happening in Washington and maybe they can get something done in the next month, but nothing concrete that I'm aware of.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
We've also, we've also been invited for a meeting with Senate Ways and Means Chair, Michael Rodrick's next week. And Senator Brady to. Get updates, the fifteenth, is that this week?
Yes.
This week.
Yes, this week, Wednesday. It's going too fast, so, and Connor, you were invited to that as well, so hopefully they have some updates for us. Chuck?
I only want to say briefly that I have a great appreciation for the state leadership and Governor Baker in particular. In conducting and guiding us toward a slow reopening, we're seeing by the mistakes of some other states. That it was not a good choice to open too soon. And although it's. It's, we're not, we're not. It's not good to see lives lost wherever it is in this country. But we, it is, it was, it is fortunate for us to reopen slowly. And see the benefits once again of. Of what we know about wearing masks and and making sure we're protected when we go out of doors. And into markets and other places and I'm very appreciative of that kind of leadership. That's it.
I have no comments.
All right. With that, I'm just going to give a heads up because there are some people in our attendees list that if you do have questions. Put, please put them in the Q and A, I'm not sure if you're just observing or you do have questions. So if you have one, put it in the Q and A and we'll get to it before we end. Other than that, we would like to get an acceptance of our general minutes from February nineteenth and June eighteenth. If anyone has any comments or questions on those. Motion.
So moved.
Second.
So Craig, motion Tom, second to accept the minutes of those two dates, roll call vote Craig.
Barger, yes.
We start, yes.
King, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Full Janetti, yes. All right, Select Board notes, anyone have any comments or?
Just one, just one thing following up Dottie on your. Comment about Senator Rodrick's having a meeting on on Wednesday. We had the occasion last night to have a conversation with Senator Brady and. Connor, he said that there's a one twelfth budget, is that? Is that your understanding that we have a one twelfth budget at this point? Or?
The Commonwealth has adopted, I believe, short term interim budgets for themselves, for their, for their budget. That does not, that doesn't change. Us.
No, no, but it is a one, it is a one, then basically it's a one twelfth budget.
I haven't read it closely enough to do the math to say yes or no, but I would imagine that's probably the model they're using, they're using.
Senator was, was, as has been indicated, you indicated and a few other folks indicated that. That there's still really no, no clear indication as to what kind of a revenue loss, it's two billion or eight billion. It's still so up in the air. That, that, one of the things that we're waiting on is to see after July fifteenth. What the income tax returns are that had been delayed since April, so that, that. That may be a positive news, I don't, I have no preconceived notions about that.
Right, yeah, so we're all keeping an eye on it, but it's going to be, this is going to be a long. Challenging fiscal year, for sure.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, I do have a couple of notes that I wanted to mention and then we do have a question from Nicole. Asking what, any idea when the town library may reopen? So for people that are not subscribed to the Eastern Town Crier, if you go to the town's website on the front page. There's a link to subscribe to that and it has town updates, one of them that I did want to mention tonight was. That the Ames Free Library is, has contactless curbside pickup, so. You can reach out to the library and request, there's a link actually in that email. To find out how to pick up your materials or you can go to the library's website for that. We don't have an update as far as when they're open to the public, but you can still get your books that way. And I would say just check out the library's website for more updated information on that. One of the other things that's good news is that the Eastern Original Farmers Market has opened, they're on the S curve. And so definitely check that out. And. Beginning July twentieth through August tenth, let's talk about race book discussion with the Human Rights Committee and Raising Multicultural Kids. They're going to be looking at the book White Fragility by Robin D'Angelo, which is a New York Times bestseller. So for people who want to have those kinds of conversations and and learn more about those issues, check out Raising Multicultural Kids. Social media presence and there's details about that also in the town crier. And then last but not least, Oliver Ames High School class of twenty twenty is going to have a parade of cars graduation on July twenty-sixth. So we would like to congratulate our seniors and I'm glad that the schools will be able to. Celebrate them on that day, I know that they were trying to do the best they could to, you know, have little milestones along the way. And hopefully there'll be a lot of people cheering on the sides for that. So if there's no other comments or questions, I would take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Craig and Tom, roll call vote.
Barger, yes.
We start, yes.
King, yes.
Lamb, yes.
And full Janetti, yes, thank you everyone, have a great week.